All right, I am about to call to order the Kingston School Committee for April 2nd, 2024. We will begin with roll call. Mrs. Cannon?
Here.
Mrs. Coleman?
Here.
Mr. Chikane?
Here.
Mrs. Arietta?
Here.
And Timothy Lewis is here. I'm sure you're all here for number seven on the agenda, the nutrition grant approval. We will get to that in due time. But the first order of business is the school choice hearing followed by our regular meeting. For those who don't know, school choice is a program in the Commonwealth where if the school committee were to vote to approve school choice, we would be required to accept students from other communities. So I'll open it up to the committee for any comments, questions, or concerns relative to school choice. Jean?
I would make a motion that we not approve school choice. School choice comes with a lot of costs. Number one, that we are only given $5,000 for each student that we accept, and we are responsible for their education through graduation. If they're on NIAP, we're responsible for those costs as well. And we do not have additional funding to support school choice at this time.
Second, then a motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second on school choice. A yes vote is in line with Jean's motion to not accept school choice at this time. Mrs. Cannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Chikane?
Yes.
Mrs. Arietta?
Yes.
And Timothy Lewis is a yes. That's five to zero. Before I go any further, I would like to just mention that this meeting is being recorded by local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the chair at this time. We do have many guests who are with us virtually. If you do wish to speak during the public comment session, we ask you to raise your hand and we will call on you accordingly. I will entertain a motion to take the budget portion of the meeting out of order and to place that at... Okay, Megan, go ahead.
There is an attendee with a hand up, so Emily was just wondering whether or not you would like to take that at this time, or...
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna take a motion, I'm gonna entertain a motion to take out of order, one, number four, building assessment to go to the beginning of the agenda before hearing from visitors. And then we will hear from visitors and then go into our budget section. Okay?
I make a motion to take the building assessments out of order and put that first.
Second?
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we're gonna take it out of order. Michael, would you like to go to the podium and share your building assessments?
The Chair pleases. At our last meeting, we provided you with the report, and we mentioned that our Director of Facilities, Mike Lawless, would be here tonight to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
So we did facility assessments on both buildings. KES was in worse shape, so please make sure the green button on the microphone, and that light on. Oh, one more button, there you go.
So we did a facility assessment on both buildings. KES was in worse shape, so we've applied to the MSBA for roof and siding work, window work, some facility exterior sidewalk work, stuff like that. KIS wasn't as bad, but in your packet, there is a schedule of three different scopes. The first scope is out two years, and then the next two are five years. So they've calculated costs to go out that long.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any members of the committee have any questions or concerns or comments?
I had a question. Do you know any timeline to hear back on the MSBA loan, or not loaned to grant?
No. We haven't heard anything yet. So yeah, I know it'll be a little bit, but we don't have a timeline for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the grant gonna cover the entire cost, or what portion?
I think it's a portion, but I think it depends every year. They have to invite us in, and then we'll continue on with the process. We did this facility assessment. We used a roof study from a few years ago. So if they invite us in, I think we'll have to update the roof assessment. But this should be good for the rest of the building.
Just a question of clarification. If this grant is approved, that would be coming out of a capital plan budget, not the school committee budget. Is that correct?
The town has voted to support the cost, should we be approved, that are not covered by the grant.
All right. Any further questions for Mike? All right, Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I will open it up to hear from any visitors, and I'm sure there are many people who would like to speak. I just ask if you state your name, your address, and we ask you to just keep your comments brief and to the point. Before I call on the individual who's with us remotely, I am gonna ask Carl Pike, former treasurer of the community and a member of the Finance Council, to speak on behalf of the town for their concerns. Thank you.
Well, we have quite a gathering here. There must be something important on the agenda. Carl Pike, retired treasurer, Finance Committee Chair. A lot of you know me. I have been a big proponent and supporter of the schools and the school budgets for the last 12 years. In some ways, I've become a go-between, between the town administration and the school committees and the school administration. I just would like to, you know, give you a brief update as to where we stand as a town finances. We have always, since I've been involved, tried to be very conservative in our financial management. We've tried to service the various functions, the various departments, the schools, while at the same time thinking about the residents, the annual tax bills, et cetera. We have tried to keep our, you all know, or at least know the term, Proposition Two and a Half. Proposition Two and a Half says that we are able to tax our residents an increase of two and a half percent every year. We always hope to get some new growth. We hope to have some commercial businesses. We have new homes built. We have additions to homes. So that gives us another percent. So we try to keep the budget increases year to year about three and a half percent. And when we do that, you'll see an increase in your residential tax bill every year, but not a significant amount. This year, we started off trying to target about three and a half percent departmental budget increases across the board. We've ended up with the town departments such as the police and fire, recreation, streets and trees and parks, somewhere a little bit less than five percent, okay? So when we saw the first school budget meeting, which was gonna be almost a 15 percent increase, okay, as much as we wanna support the schools, we wanna support the teachers, we wanna provide the great education, we didn't feel that we could come anywhere near providing 15 percent increase and being fair to other departments, other functions, and to the taxpayers. So we've been working with the administrations, with the school committees, to try to come up with some reasonable numbers that we recognize five percent is probably not livable this year, okay? The number that we're looking at right now for the school budgets, without any reductions at the local level, including the reduction that Silver Lake has put through already, where for our assessment, we're at about an 11 percent increase to the school budget year over year. That still is a very difficult, if not impossible, number to work with, that that will result in every homeowner in Kingston seeing somewhere around a $400 increase on their property tax, just for the schools, okay? So again, I'm speaking as kind of a representative of the town residents, representative from the Finance Committee, and somebody who wants to work with the school administration and the school committees to come up with some kind of compromise where we believe we're still providing the best education that we can for our students, but also not forcing people to leave Kingston because of the high tax rates. I can tell you, my three years as treasurer, the toughest part of that job is the number of homes that people are either selling or way behind on their real estate taxes. And so that they would come into the office and say, can I spread these tax payments out over a couple of more years or something? I'd always try to work with them, but you get to the point where it just compounds itself. So that's one of the reasons why I feel we need to come to some kind of a compromise, that if we, if we did, if you did the total reductions that are being sought, you'd be still at an educational increase of over five percent. If we do a increase of, you know, maybe a million dollars, and I know a million dollars sounds like an awful lot, but if we had a million dollar reduction in local schools' education costs, then we would be somewhere around a seven percent increase. And that's something that I think that, you know, perhaps we could all work with, we could, would find a way to make that work, despite the fact that it's a kick in the teeth to the police department who has not added a body in 20 years. It's a kick in the teeth to the fire department. The fire department has added four people, okay? Their budget is going up this year about four and a half percent. Four and a half percent, not six percent, not eight percent. The police department budget is going up two and a half percent. The streets, trees, and parks, I don't think is even that, two percent. So that in order to balance everything out across the towns, I encourage the school committee, the school administration, to work to find some solutions where we continue to provide the education that we all wanna provide, but we find ways to make the numbers balance better. And I assure the parents that are sitting here, there is nobody in town government that wants to sacrifice education. There is nobody that wants to see us take money away from education. We all recognize that education in almost every community in Massachusetts is going to be 50 percent of the local budget. We, last year, we were at 53 percent. The numbers that I would like to see, we'd be at about 52 and a half percent. The original number was 56 percent. So that it behooves us all to work together to find ways to make these things work. Thank you.
Emily, is there an individual on who is with us remotely that would like to speak? All right, thank you. The name is, I see Terry. You've been unmuted, Terry, if you'd Emily, what do you think? They just stepped away from the computer?
[inaudible]
Okay. All right. Well, if Terry rejoins us, we'll welcome he or her to the microphone. At this point, we will open it up to hear from any visitors. Again, I invite you to the podium. Please make sure the microphone is on. If not, my friend in the back will let you know it. And again, in the interest of time, please communicate your concerns in a respectful way, please. Anyone?
Mr. Chair, may I?
Please.
Just remind the public that the rest of the meeting typically is not a, open for questions or comments. So if you do have something to say that pertains to the budget now, it would be the time to do so.
Thank you, Jean. Eric, please. He's one of our old friends. All right.
Eric Crone, 43, Longwood Circle. I'm now on the Board of Selectmen, but I spent 16 years in your chairs, and I'm certainly glad I'm not on your committee this year. It's, that's some huge numbers to deal with, and the same at the regional school district. I just wanna remind the public, and you guys as well, many, many years, we were asked to make cuts. One of the biggest problems when we've made cuts in the past, and there were some years where we had to make some pretty big cuts. We cut gym back, we cut art, music, we cut bands. We did some things that had some long-lasting effects for the entire district. One of the issues, obviously, when you're making cuts, you're making cuts potentially to programs, making class sizes bigger, making it less desirable to, for families to send their kids to our school district. And what options do they have? Their options are to sell their house, move to another school district that has better programs, smaller class sizes, things that are important to them. So they can sell their house and they can move, or they could take their kid out and go to private school. And if they go to private school, the family's paying. It really doesn't have an effect on the local district, other than we lose that state money for that child after they leave and go to private school. But the local taxes are not hit. But along came charter schools many, many years ago, and that does take money away from our school district. I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was pretty big. The numbers that we're spending every year, paying for tuition, not just coming from the state, but our local taxes, it comes right out of the school budget. Goes into the budget, and it goes right out, and we're paying another school. But when that kid leaves our district and goes to the charter school, the amount of money that we lose, the expenses don't go down. So if we have 10 kids leave the school district and go to the charter schools, we're not saving that much money. You can't lay off a teacher. I mean, I guess if you had 22 kids in one grade level, you could, because you're bringing down, but that's a lot more money that you're losing than just that one teacher. So just keep that in mind when you guys are looking at cuts. You guys are autonomous. You guys were elected to, you know, vote a budget that you think is reasonable. In the, in years past, we'd had, we've had an override, I don't remember how long ago it was, I wanna say 2014 or something, that we did an override. But we knew a lot further in advance to do it, to put it on the town meeting warrant, and then to put it on a ballot for a special election. So just, just keep that in mind. I mean, as you're cutting things, and it's really hard to get those things back. The other thing is special education. I know that's what has really, a lot of changes in the district in terms of moving special ed to the regional budget for all three towns, and that, and definitely some additional costs, but also just additional expenses that clearly have made this year's budget go a little wonky. You know, if there's ways that you can audit to figure out what happened and how to prevent that from happening before, I know a lot of this stuff comes, people move in or out of the district, and it can just completely mess up your entire budget, which sounds like it did. But if there's a plan to kinda, over time, if you do have to cut things out of your budget, if there's a plan to figure out where these costs are, bring those costs back down and put back into the programs, because as people know, any cuts that you're being asked to make are not in the special education line items, which is what has skyrocketed for next year. So you're making cuts to the regular day education, you know. And again, I don't envy you, you know, thank you guys for donating your time to do what you need to do, and thank you to the administration. They're dealing with probably the toughest year I've ever remembered in our town. So thank you, and don't cut too deep. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Emily, I see two hands now up who are joining us remotely. Ms. Vaughn? Okay, please.
Hello. Shilvaun, 7 Frank Street. I will say, I was also, funny that Eric was up there, but I was also on school committee for about 10 years, and a selectman in the town now. And I just feel as though I wanted to listen in, and I would never usually say something, but I do, you know, I do believe that, but I'll say it every year, level funding is not level service. And so every year, we kinda have to go up, and I understand this year is exponentially harder than most years, because there are a lot of changes that we somewhat knew going into it, that it was gonna be tough because of the preschool having to move over to Silver Lake. And again, like Eric said, special education cannot be cut. So I know that that's a difficult situation, but when the cuts come, it comes from the regular day budget. And if, it's hard to explain to some people what that means, but what it means is that we have to fund special education. We, so what happens is, whatever we can't fund, we, that's why we separate out the actual special education from the regular day. Kingston has actually done a very good job this year of trying to stay in the budget. Obviously, Silver Lake had to pick up some of that slack. But this was mandated because of DUCI needed it to come through. And I think that that's some of those things that people have to understand, that these are mandated things that we have to do. It's not like we can just say, okay, we're not gonna do that. So I do support the schools, obviously. I got three kids in the school, just had a kindergartner coming up, you know, and I have a junior in an eighth grader. And I'm very, very understanding of the school budget. It's usually about 50 percent of our budget. And if people are really understanding of the budget, you have to come out at town meetings, and you have to vote. You know, our town has 100 people at our town meeting most years. It's on May 11th, you have to come out and you have to vote. Because if you want to have what you need, you can't sit in a meeting and not come to the town and make your voice hurt. So if you have something to say, you should really say it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Emily, let's see if Terry's back. All right, thank you. Anyone else from the community?
I don't know.
Okay. All right. She's already up?
Yeah.
All right. Let's go with Heidi Whipple, and then I'll go to a member of the, in person. Go ahead.
Hi, Heidi Whipple, 35, Lake Street. I just wanna say, one of the reasons we moved to Kingston five years ago was for the education that this town can provide. We left private school, and if they're gonna start making these classrooms bigger, 30 kids, it will not take but a breath to put them back into private school. Because you can't, a 30 kid classroom isn't conducive for learning environments. Our children deserve better. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Fox?
Should I speak now?
Oh, yeah. Do we have to take her out?
I thought Mr. Plana was here for teachers' corner, too.
We don't have to vote to let her speak.
She can, she can speak.
Yeah, come on up, Heidi.
Yeah.
Not Ms. Pishkin, just Heidi. No, I'm just kidding. Come on. She actually lives in town, right?
Microphone's on. I don't want to agitate anyone in there. Am I good? All right. Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Heidi Fox. I am proud to be in my 17th year teaching kindergarten at KES, and second year as president of the Kingston Teachers Association. Tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of the educators of Kingston and our students. We love our students. We think of them as part of our family. We take pride in providing them with rich, high-quality education and engaging learning experiences. We instill within our students the love of learning, foster the courage to follow their dreams, encourage them to think outside the box and ask questions, and teach them how to collaborate and be team players. As educators, we want our students to thrive and take with them the skills they need to be successful out in the world. We understand that we're facing financial challenges. We're all struggling with increased costs, but however, by cutting our classroom-based staff, it strips away one of the greatest resources available to these children, their teachers. We implore you to reduce the direct impact to the ground level where children, children will feel it most. And before cutting teachers or paraprofessionals, please consider the suggestions that we've provided by trimming at the administrative level. We also ask for transparency in how these drastic increases have come about, and what plans you have for the future to ensure that our students and community are not impacted again in this way. Our intent is not to be adversarial, and while we strive to work together, our first duty is to advocate for the students of Kingston. We hope that you keep them, their educational needs, and the quality of their learning conditions in mind when making your budgetary decisions this evening. Thank you for your time and attention. Appreciate it.
Thank both of you. All right. Any other visitors wish to speak?
I think Keith was trying to speak, but I can't see the case. It doesn't look like he's, but he's online.
Oh, okay.
Can you see me?
No. So let's...
I have Tony's hair up.
Say that louder for me.
I have Tony's hair up right now.
Okay, let's go with Tony, and then we'll, we'll look for Keith Hickey. Keith Hickey, for those who don't know, is our town administrator.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello. So I am also new to Kingston. I've been here for two years. My family moved across the country to come to the school district. And we thought a lot before moving, and we fell in love with first elementary school, and the hospitality, and the education. And I'm also a college professor, and I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional, but my college classes are capped at 30 students, and these are grown adults. These are 18 to, you know, working professionals coming back to college to get their education. So I can't imagine a class where my six-year-old, or my nine-year-old, or my three-year-olds are sitting in a class with 30 people. So I just ask that. You really consider, and I appreciate what the teachers had to say, our children and their future here in Kingston, because this is gonna hurt a lot of families with, who take sacrifices to be here. And that's all I wanna say. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Did we locate Mr. Hickey?
Emily, do you need a charger? It's showing me batteries.
Keith, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, talk a little louder, please.
Okay, no problem. Happy to do so. How can I help you this evening?
Keith asked you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Keith. I'm getting bad information here. But I'll take that one. So if you'd like to, if you have anything to share, you're free to do so. But if you're just here to listen and take it all in, I'll, I'll move on.
Okay, yeah, feel free. I'm just here to listen and answer any questions that anybody may have of me.
All right, thanks, Keith.
You bet.
And any members of the, please, come on up.
Hi, I'm Michaela Cologne, 155, Summer Street. Parent of three kids, two in KES and one in the preschool. I'm just here thanking the teachers for what they do. The experience at KES has been amazing. But I also come as an adult who, in my childhood, struggled with dyslexia and auditory processing. Right now, my two children, who are in kindergarten and in first grade, I am using outside resources to bring them to a reading tutor monthly. Now, I, as a parent, looked for Kingston because of its school and because, because of its reputation. And I think putting these children in a classroom size of 30, it's taking away from the social, emotional factor that these teachers take into account every day. So it's not just special education, which is huge, right? And I am definitely one who's keeping my children, who are one and three, to have dyslexia as well. I'm thinking about the kids who come in day to day, and something is slipping at home. These teachers are picking up on it. These are the ones who are going to save someone's lives somewhere down the road that wouldn't have gotten that support. So I want you to think about when you're making those budget cuts, think of that child who cannot speak up. Think of the people who can't afford to do outside services because their kid wasn't... Think of the people who can't afford to do outside services because their kid wouldn't really qualify or can't even be tested right now for dyslexia, even though it runs in their, in their family history. So this is here, I'm just saying, I love KES, I love the teachers that we've had, I've loved the preschool experience. These people deserve all the money that they can have. Bring on that extra $400 a month, because I'm paying more than that for reading expenses for my children to make sure that they are not following in my footsteps. So thank you so much, I'm new to this thing, but getting involved.
You did okay for your first go. All right. Lauren?
Hi, Lauren L. Terrace, three off Second Brook Street. Yes, that's the name of a street in this town. I'm a teacher myself in the district, not in Kingston, but, so I'm fully aware of the budget issues going on, but I'm more concerned about my own children here in this town and how much they're going to be affected by these budgets cuts. Like I said, I'm a teacher myself, I actually teach special ed, so I get how expensive that is. But, you know, just for example, last year before, they brought in the new teachers to KES, my son was one of twenty-seven kindergarteners in a class. And as any teacher, or I'm sure any parent knows, I don't know how, and I even work with kids, how somebody handles twenty-seven, five, and six-year-olds, because I couldn't do it all day. So my concern is the effect that that's going to have on all of the students. My son, for example, I know he struggled a little bit more with reading last year, but since he's in a smaller classroom this year, he's already doing much better. His DIBL scores and all those have gone up. Nice job, ladies. And I think, I'm just really concerned with, there's already, as the last mom said, there's not enough intervention services in our schools, and if we're cutting those positions and classroom positions, we're just going to see more increases in student need, and I think it's going to end up affecting the budget for a long time coming. And then as far as the teachers go, too, like this, nobody becomes a teacher to make money, right? We're not all raking in the dough. But, you know, I know how hard they all work, they work outside of school hours. I know a few haven't been home today, because, you know, we're working on all of this, but I just think it's really important before we're just automatically going to those teachers and paras and anybody who works actually in the schools with the kids, just try to find some way to find, I know it's impossible to find the money, but if we can really look into ways we can save this school, because I think, I, I just, I think it's going to be really impactful on the kids, what's going to happen. That's all.
Thank you, Lauren. We're still in the hearing for many visitors section of the meeting. If anyone would like to add new information or share a different perspective, I welcome you to the podium, please.
Thank you. My name's George Egan. I live at 131 Country Club Way. I don't, I don't feel that, what we're talking about is a, like, big, big cuts. I don't see how this is even an option. My wife, so my wife works for the school, she's a substitute para. She makes about $108 a day, okay? I challenge anybody to, to, to live on that. She doesn't do it because she needs the money, or she wants, she needs that job for that. She does it for the kids, she does it to be at the school. How do you bring, how do you bring money even lower than what we're paying people now? How do you, how do you eliminate teachers' jobs right now when they have so much that they have to handle as it is right now with the kids that they have? How do you put thirty kids in a classroom with one teacher, or one teacher and a para? I challenge anybody here to take thirty kindergarteners. We should have brought thirty here tonight and lined them up. One of you, can you go watch them for an hour? How about six hours? I have a six-year-old at home, I can't even watch her and two dogs. So, I mean, this to me is like, not, you can't skimp on emergency services in town. If we had blizzards back-to-back for the whole winter, we'd figure out how to find the money. We'd increase taxes, I guess, or what we have to do. That's what we have to do. I mean, it's not, I don't, I don't see even how this, if, if this was small cuts, if we were talking about, you know, eliminating some of the programs in the school that are a small number of things, but eliminating teacher positions, eliminating para positions, it's, it's just, it just makes no sense to me. Like, if this is the cost that it's going, going to take to pay for the teachers to, to keep their jobs and to take care of our children, then, then we pay it. I mean, that's, that's just, that's just my feeling. It comes from somewhere. I know that the town has different departments with different budgets that, I'm, okay, I own a landscaping company in Plymouth. I just put a bid in for a $50,000 park out here for, for planting flowers for a memorial park. It's a veterans' memorial park, don't get me wrong, I give full respect for veterans, but this is what the town can't find money to take care of things that are more important at this time, then I don't know, I don't know what to say. Like, it's something, it's got to come from somewhere. That's my, that's my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Ember, 214 Indian Pond Road, also chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I have actually a question, and I know you can't respond right now, but something to think about. Last year, I'm trying to remember what the percent increase was on schools that was proposed, nine percent is coming to mind, but I don't know if we ended that high. I remember last year was an extraordinary year, I remember. And if this year, we're looking at somewhere between eleven and fifteen percent is what it sounded like, I guess I'm concerned about next year and where we could go from there. So if it's going to continue to increase significantly, how do we approach this next year? So that's just some food for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. At this point, I'm comfortable moving on from the hearing for many visitors. Okay. Last call? All right. Thank you. All right, we're going to jump into the budget, because we all, that's why you're here. So we move that out of order, and we're going to, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Prue and her central office staff to speak to the budget. In some cases, this will be the first time members of the public see this version of our budget.
Point of order, we have not moved it yet, so can we make the motion to move it? Sorry, we only moved the building assessment.
Okay, thank you for that reminder.
Can I make a motion that we hear from Dr. Prue with the budget presentation now?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we moved it now to this next section. Jill, Dr. Prue and her staff are going to go over it. This is, in some cases, the first time the public will see this version. The, I just need to remind you, as Jean said earlier, the public comment section of the meeting is closed, and now it becomes our responsibility to listen and to make decisions moving forward. Dr. Prue?
Thank you. So tonight, we have a presentation for you based upon the, the request to reduce the amount of our budget, and we have, we have had a very long process to, to get to this point today. Our budget season actually begins in the fall, when we work with our staff, we ask our principals to provide us with input as to what they need to maintain level services. We work with our special education director, we work with our technology director, we work with our curriculum coordinator, Melissa Farrell, and they all also gave presentations in, earlier in the school year. As we build these budgets, we had a number of changes that we were required to make, and in addition, we have been faced with increasing costs, like many schools throughout the state. Inflation, rising costs of out-of-district tuitions, rising costs of transportation, rising costs to everything from paper to the crayons that the kids use. It is all leading to increases in our budget that we are finding difficult to sustain. And so when we took all of these changes and we presented them to the school committee, we then highlighted what was, what were the major increases in our budgets, and we presented that at a joint school committee meeting a week or two ago. March 14th, thank you. So at that time, we heard from members of the town and from our school committee, and we were asked to provide proposed cuts to the budget that were more sustainable to the town. And that's what we have prepared tonight. We did not prepare this presentation in isolation, we worked with building principals, we, we worked with our administrative team, we worked with members of the town, and I'd like to specifically thank our town administrator, Keith Hickey, and Carl Pike for what I would call meeting with us regularly, and we appreciate that, your help and support in trying to troubleshoot and find solutions to some of our budgetary issues. I'd also like to thank the KTA for their willingness to share with us ideas and thoughts of ways that we can help become more efficient or to perhaps save money in order to help save positions. So with all that said, it has truly been a difficult task. We have taken it very seriously. We don't anticipate there, that there's a, anything on this list that anyone would be happy with cutting. So we'd like for you to give our principals and our business director the opportunity to explain what has brought us here and how we can address some of the budgetary concerns for the school committee to consider.
Mr. Chair?
Jean, go ahead.
I just want to interject to make sure the public's aware that none of these cuts have actually been made. They're proposed cuts that we were asked by the town to present tonight, and these will be discussed once the presentation is over. So these positions have not been cut yet.
That was understood. All right. Who's going first? Sarah?
Please, next slide, please. So some of the slides in this slide deck are, are repeats from that March 14th presentation to the joint school committee. So the Kingston version three budget changes that were made between when we saw you last and now, we took additional 240, I'm sorry, 240 grant allocation money, which reduced the budget by $170,944. Additional circuit breaker estimate was reducing the budget $869,655, and I created a tuition offset line, which made no change to the budget, it just made the budget easier for me to talk about. So the changes reduced the budget $1,040,599. On the next slide, you'll see the changes made to the Silver Lake budget since I saw you last. I went through all of the salary lines with the principals and the HR department. We adjusted thirty-two salary lines, which ended up being a decrease of $290,428. We received a technology grant, which is going to offset purchases of hardware by $70,000. We're moving Silver Lake integrated preschool supplies to the pre-K revolving account, which will decrease the Silver Lake budget by $40,000. There was an, there were additional tuitions and transportations added to the budget for a total of $413,556, and there was an insurance adjustment increase of $111,704. And so there was an increase overall to the Silver Lake budget of $124,842. On the next slide, so the Kingston proposed version five budget of $14,956,896.81 will require a reduction of $1,882,973.94 to meet the threshold set by the town for the total cost of education for FY '25. On March 14th, at the end of the meeting, we asked the towns, what number was it that was appropriate for the town? I was told that Kingston could afford a $1.5 million increase over FY '25, and so these are the constraints that we have been working in.
Sarah, may I, and the, the $1.5 million increase is 5.3% increase, percentage-wise?
Yep.
Thank you. Got it, keep going.
Thank you. I think it's on the next slide, I was just trying to think of where. So if you could go back to the previous slide, Emily? Sorry. So after the March 13th, March 14th, School Committee meeting after Silver Lake voted their budget on March 22nd, I went through and I updated all of the budgets for the shared cost, which was voted by the school committee, and I adjusted the assessments. Next slide, Emily. Okay, thank you. I adjusted the assessments, and so the assessment for Kingston for FY '25, I'm sorry, I didn't finish my sentence, the reductions that were made for Silver Lake, and then the amount of E and D that was added to the revenue caused a need to adjust the assessments. So Kingston's assessment of $16,744,111.49 is a $4,861,389.97 increase over FY '24, or a 40.9% increase. On the next slide, the total cost of education. For, the total cost of education for Kingston would be $29,818,034.36, which is a $1.5 million increase over FY '24. So then the, the question comes, and this, again, these are slides from a previous slide deck, which was a very long meeting, and we're not going to go through that entire slide deck with you, but one of the questions was, why is there an increase in the total cost for education? So we put together this, these, in this current fiscal year, in the 2023-2024 school year, we have special education staff that were added after the FY '24 budget was approved, and this was approximately $470,000 across all four entities. And so these are positions that were required and will be added to the budget for FY '25. On the next slide, this is a list of unbudgeted costs during FY '24, so tuitions and transportations for students, special ed students, that weren't known or weren't budgeted by June 30th of last year, that we're currently paying this year. We're using our FY '24 circuit breaker funds to cover some of this increase this year. On the next slide is new FY '25 costs, approximately $1.6 million in tuitions and transportation and extended school year costs for all four entities. And so this is part of the increase. This next slide, and I'm sorry you can't see the numbers well, I will read them to you. On this next slide, what I wanted to do was demonstrate the structural change. There has been a significant structural change to the Silver Lake Regional School District and Union 31 between FY '24 and FY '25. If you look at the top, that is FY '24. There is everything that happens within the brick and mortar of the building, so that's that rectangle underneath the roof of the school. On the left-hand side is regular education at $10,249,247.49. On the right-hand side is the special education instruction that happens within the walls of KES and KIS of $2,104,110.38. Outside of that, on the left, is out-of-district vocational expenses, that is students that attend Bristol Agricultural High School, Norfolk Agricultural High School, students that are vocational students in programs that aren't offered at Silver Lake Regional High School, for example. High School, for example, um, South Shore Vo-Tec offers electricity, so it's not offered at Silver Lake. If a student in Kingston wants to study that, we pay out of, um, out-of-district vocational, which is a Kingston expense. On the right-hand side at the top, there are out-of-district special education costs of two million three hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-seven cents, and Silver Lake staff revolving programs, one million five hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty cents. Those Silver Lake revolving programs are funded through out-of-district tuition lines in the Kingston budget, and that is for students in programs at the middle school and at the high school, and those, um, those staff members are Silver Lake staff that are paid out of a revolving account, and the money goes from the tuition line into the revolving account, and then pays the staff's salary and benefits. That is something that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education told us could not continue. So if you look at the bottom, you'll notice that those revolving programs aren't there anymore. So in FY twenty-five, there will still be, under the roof of the school, within the walls of KES and K- KIS, there will be regular education expenses, eleven million forty thousand six hundred three dollars ninety-four cents, and special education expenses, three million four hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred two dollars ninety-eight cents. There will still continue to be, um, out-of-district vocational costs, which we have estimated at two hundred fifty thousand four hundred dollars, and on the right-hand side, Kingston will only be paying tuition and transportation, out-of-district tuition and transportation for students grades K through six. All pre-K out-of-district tuitions and transportation, and all grades seven to twelve plus will be part of the Silver Lake budget, which you can see on the next slide. So, the next slide shows Silver, at the top is Silver Lake in FY twenty-four. Within the buildings of Silver Lake are, uh, regular ed and special ed expenses of twenty-nine million six hundred thousand dollars, and then there are those revolving programs at the middle school and the high school, with staff being paid one million nine hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred six dollars seventy-five cents. And then, there are additional Silver Lake revolving funded programs, there are none at Halifax Elementary School this year, there had been, uh, previously. There are Silver Lake revol- revolving programs at Kingston Elementary School and Kingston Intermediate School. Those are, again, Silver Lake staff members currently working in those buildings that the, the bookkeeper for the special ed department calculates how much is spent on the cost of the program, this is the DLC program, the TLC, um, programs. The bookkeeper calculates the cost of the program, calculates how many students and from where they come, and then bills the out-of-district tuition lines in the different towns, puts that money in a revolving account, the revolving account then pays those Silver Lake staff, and that's something we have been directed to discontinue. There are no Silver Lake revolving programs at Denard Elementary School this year. On the bottom, FY twenty-five for Silver Lake, you'll see that I have three sections within the school. There's regular education and special education at the middle school and the high school. The regular education is twenty-six million five hundred sixty-seven thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-four cents. Special education within the walls of middle school and high school are four million six hundred one thousand ninety-three dollars and forty cents, and then the Silver Lake Integrated Preschool is going to be a completely Silver Lake program next year, and the staff for that is budgeted at two million one hundred ten thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and ten cents. Outside of the brick and mortar of the Silver Lake buildings, Silver Lake is responsible for out-of-district tuition and transportation for pre-K students and grades seven through twelve plus. The cost of that is seven million two hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-nine cents. So, we, we do have increased costs for FY twenty-five, and, um, I'm now presenting this slide for the fourth time, and I'm going to say the same thing again. When you look at contractual obligations, that is not just teach, yes, teachers have contracts, and contracts with teachers increased. Contractual obligations, from my point of view, for the building, you know, for a school business manager, is the cost for the contract to maintain the elevator in a building, the cost for the AED inspections and repairs, the, this is any, you know, contracts for copy machines or printers. So contractual obligations, yes, it is staff, but it also, it is everything else, and the price for contracts has gone up. Um, health insurance is on here, there was, uh, an increase in the cost of health insurance, which is paid solely in Silver Lake, but that, that increase is shared with the towns through the assessment. We've had, uh, substantial increases in special education transportation and tuitions, the cost of supplies has increased, and, as well as utilities. So, these are overall increased costs for FY twenty-five.
So as we mentioned, um, we have been meeting with the principals, not once, not twice, but many times, um, to discuss their thought process in terms of what these reductions would look like. We have been meeting and discussing things, um, with our local town administrators, with school committee, with, uh, local legislators, to see what may or may not be available in terms of support and funding. We are here tonight to present a tiered approach to the budget reductions as requested by our school committee.
Good evening, Andy Materna, the KIS at, um, sorry, the principal at KIS.
Carrie Whipple, principal at KES.
We'd like to start by sharing our guiding principles here. It's our job to put forth a fiscally responsible budget for the school year, but also keeping intact, um, these guiding principles here. Maintaining class size for tier one instruction, we've heard a lot of that, this is, we take that into consideration. We want to maintain offerings in our specialist classes, we want to maintain student support as much as possible, we want to look at special education service requirements, and we also want to maintain a safe learning environment for our students. Using these guiding principles, Carrie and I have put forth what we believe are, um, responsible decisions around potential reductions. As Jeanie presented earlier, these are possible, these are, this is what we're presenting, um, to the committee to vote on, and, uh, this is not finalized yet.
So just want to say thank you to everyone for being here, it's nice having everyone in the room for these meetings, it's not always this packed, so thank you guys, and I appreciate the comments that were shared today. Um, we share those same sentiments, and like Ms. Materna said, you know, we want to create a safe learning environment where all students can learn, so, um, that being said, these are the difficult things that we have to talk about as principals, so if we can go, next slide. Um, so when we first look at, you know, we look at our budget, we think, what can we cut that doesn't impact student learning in classrooms too much, and what materials and things can we go without? Um, and so when we look at like curriculum and technology lines, these are some of the, the numbers that we came up with as far as what we could potentially cut in these areas. This, you might wonder, like, what are, what are those line items mean? And that's looking at like extra classroom libraries, that's looking at science consumables, social studies materials, reading intervention resources. For instructional software, we're, we're looking at like Typing Club, Reading A to Z, Brain Pop, so some software programs that we currently have subscriptions to that we wouldn't continue. Um, technology, that's not replacing projectors, that might be outdated, um, not ordering new iPads, teacher laptops, um, and potential camera issues as well. So, those are kind of the things that we can still run a school, but make potential cuts to. Um, when it comes to the contracted service building, we had projects we had proposed to do, like, we like to try to upkeep the building, we love to make KIS a place that looks nice and feels comfortable to learn in, so a painting project, um, not including, not creating shop doors for, um, two double doors for us to be able to take pallets through, so some projects came off of that list as well. Um, and then when it comes to teacher supplies, we looked at classroom supplies. We've been able to provide some really nice resources for our students in the classrooms, and so that's an area that we, we looked at cutting at. Uh, music supplies, PE supplies, you know, we have teacher desks, you would be surprised if you saw what they looked like, they're falling apart, they're duct taped, and I'd finally put some money in the budget to replace some of those. They're expensive, so, you know, that came off the list first as well. Um, for tier two, when we're looking at, um, L positions, I want to be clear that we're not looking to cut an L position, we know that we need those services, but there is alternative funding sources that we have from the state. So that's looking at, instead of us funding that position this year through our operating budget, we have state resources and funding that we can do that through. That does mean, though, that the following year, we will have to figure out how to put it back into the budget, but it's us trying to be creative and save positions and supports for students. And then when we look at staffing, I mean, we, we're, we're really fortunate, we have an amazing staff at KIS, we have a lot-
Carrie, can I, you're going to call timeout for one second, I'm sorry, Doc wants in.
I just, I just want to explain that ES fund is the emergency shelter fund, that we would be using that grant money to, um, so that's, that's where that money would be coming from, that one time.
Yeah.
Proposal.
And then, like I was saying, we, you know, we're, we're very fortunate to have a supportive staff, um, population in our school, but, um, when we have to cut a million dollars, it's, you know, it's pocket change when we're looking at teacher supplies, folders and crayons, so the staffing proposals are six paraprofessionals and two point nine full-time Unit A employees, and that's potentially, um, you know, classroom teachers. You know, last time we were really lucky, we got three new, last year we got three new gen ed teachers, and we were to increase music from point six to full-time, but if we're cutting down classrooms, cla- classroom teachers, we may not need that full-time music teacher as well, or that specialist. So the total for KES was four ninety. And then the next slide just kind of has what I already talked about, just shows the impact of the, that first tier to explain that a little bit. So I know these are tough to, it's tough to tell my staff this, I met with them this morning, um, we value every single person, um, you know, I see substitutes that are in the, in the room, who have become Paris and are there every single day for us, so it's not something we take lightly, um, but we have to figure out a way to meet the needs. Are there any questions?
We didn't go over class sizes?
Oh, sorry.
It's on the next slide, yeah, next slide.
Next slide. So when it comes to class size, um, oh, this was my, my update, but I think it, um, fits here too. So kindergarten registration opened up yesterday, and in less than twenty-four hours, we have a hundred and thirty-one students registered. Usually takes six months to get that many registered. So, that's our current enrollment, currently, with eight teachers, you can see on the right there, we have some really nice class sizes, you know, twenty in kindergarten, twenty twenty-one first grade, twenty-one, twenty-two in second grade, the enrollment, and that was, uh, the kindergarten, um, for FY, that's a estimation, the one sixty, just to be clear. So if we drop down to seven teachers at any of those grade levels, you are looking at, you know, second grade potentially with twenty-five kids is tough, and the classroom space is smaller. But those are, it's not thirty, I know people are throwing out the number thirty, but we're not at thirty with these cuts, so. Are there any questions about that?
Michael, go ahead.
Just want to make sure I'm clear, so tier one and tier two, there's no actual cuts to staffing?
Correct, yep.
And the, um, the instructional technology that you have subscriptions to, do we have, um, the ability to get any free services on, online to substitute it?
That I'm not sure about, but I know the cuts we have, we still have a lot of resources, so it's not like we're taking everything away and left with nothing, we do have other resources. Yeah. But we look at the data, what's being currently used the most, you know, what, where's, kind of where can we take from that isn't the biggest hit for our staff and our students? Yeah.
Carrie?
Yeah.
In your K classrooms, you have full-time paraprofessionals supporting the classroom teacher?
Correct.
Do any of your cuts reflect reductions to those specific paraprofessionals?
Um, I haven't decided where those powers would be, it would depend on enrollment, to be honest, and, and the needs of the whole school, yeah.
I guess just a point of order, um, Dr. Perush, should we be voting for any of this prior to the end of the presentation, or after, we've discussed it afterwards? Just want to make sure that we're not going to be going back and forth.
I, I think it would be beneficial to hear the entire presentation and then go back and make your decisions.
Yeah, that, that's what I would have said, thanks, Doc.
Any other questions for me? Thank you.
At KIS, I had a similar strategy. Again, working with the team and looking at tiers, the tiered cuts, uh, and proposed reductions. For number one, we're looking at curriculum and supplies. The line items include textbook, instructional software, technology, tier one. I had two different technology phases, working with Steve Pello, uh, and then supplies and materials. The next slide will outline in a little more detail what this entails. Tier two is unfilled and alternative funding positions. It also includes the tier two of technology reductions. The one ELL position paid by the ES funding, similarly to, um, to KES that Carrie presented earlier, uh, and a reading specialist, uh, for tier two. Now, this is, um, I'll go into further detail in the next slide on, on these positions. Tier three is the, uh, potential staffing reductions, which includes five paraprovision- five paraprofessionals, one non-union support personnel member, and three point four Unit A staff members. Next slide, please. For tier one, we're looking at textbooks, reading and writing, and science, um, consumables, the instructional software, digital learning platforms, literacy support, instructional resources, and online resources. For technology, it's licenses, docking stations, and replacements for projectors. For the supplies and materials, I looked at the budget lines for KIS, and reduced the principal supply line, uh, teacher supply line, library materials, custodial materials, and testing materials. For tier two, the tech tier two, it's additional replacement to Chromebooks, uh, replacement to docking stations, and replacement of security cameras. For the emergency shelter funding, that's for the EL teacher that we currently have, and that would just be funding that position fully from the grant from the state. That reading specialist is a retirement that we have coming up, it's a mid-year retirement, uh, and that fund reflects the remaining salary for that position, where that position would remain unfilled. For tier three, the paraprofessionals, the impact here of paraprofessionals is going to lessen the student support, um, and for Unit A members, it could potentially lead to larger class sizes, I'll talk to that in the next slide, but it's also less programming, um, for support, for student support. Next slide, please. Similarly to Carrie, uh, we're looking at the values of the students and the class sizes, grades three through six, with scenarios with six teachers, or scenarios with seven teachers. You'll see that in grade three with a hundred and seventy-one projected students rolling in, um, to reduce grade three to six classroom teachers, um, I didn't feel was responsible, so that's taken off, taken off, it's not even option, um, but exploring the numbers of the other classes, the other grade levels, um, with a potential reduction of a grade level teacher. Any questions about KIS?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Materna, and thank you, Dr. Whipple. You just made mention to, um, an impact on programming, could you just articulate a little bit more about what that would look like, please?
Yes. Working with Dr. Panarisi, we've talked a lot in past school committee meetings about the special education programs and, um, class sizes, um, and it could, one of the potential, uh, unit- And it could, one of the potential Unit A members would be one of the program teachers with a smaller class size, with a smaller need of students.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Materna?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that concludes the proposed reductions and how we would attempt to address the funding gap. At this point, we open it up to the school committee for questions, further clarification. We, we are asking the school committee to vote a number this evening.
Okay.
Jean, go ahead, please.
Given Mr. Pike's address at the beginning of the meeting, I think that, and given the changes since our last meeting in March, that Ms. Hickey has brought forward in the first slide there, which was over a million dollars in funds. I think that we would be able to make a successful reduction to the town's overall increase by cutting the tier one and two for KES that was presented, and tier one plus the tech tier two, and the reading specialist position would be left unfilled for tier two cut for KES. And that would reduce the budget to, I believe it's $1.1 million in cuts, or, excuse me, a $1.1 million increase, which would be around an 8% increase, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't think that we need to look at staff cuts any further if that would satisfy that reduction to the town.
Okay. I'm gonna, is this on?
Point, point of clarification.
Yes.
The increases in those first, the cuts in the first few slides, all of that had been incorporated into the slides that had the assessment information and the total cost of education. So, in order to meet the $1.1 million, I'm sorry, $1.5 million overall increase in the total cost of education, after Silver Lake has made their reductions, Kingston would need $1.8 million in cuts.
I understand that, but if I'm not mistaken, from what Mr. Pike just shared with us tonight, that number was slightly higher. If we were to get to around 11%, that's going to give us more room.
Hold, Mr. Pike, I'm gonna call you up in a second. This can get as more confusing than the third season of Lost. So, everybody stay, pay attention. All right. Mr. Pike, I'm gonna have you come up and clarify, but I, Jean, can you review what you just said, and I wanna make sure I have it?
Let me go back to the slide.
Yeah, because, so, we were asked 1.8 reductions. Right now, the numbers that I have, based on tier three reductions in both KE and KI, have us at about 1.1 million in reductions.
I guess my point of clarification, then, the version three changes that are presented at the top of the slide, that less of the $1,40,599, were those already included with our cuts prior to tonight's meeting?
That was included in the numbers before I redid the assessment and the total cost of education calculations.
Right.
So, those weren't, those were before those calculations.
But including that less $1 million, that makes up the 5.3% cost in education for the town, is that correct?
I, I apologize, I'm a little confused about what you're talking about. The 5.3% increase would be the, I think it's the third slide.
29 million, and, so the total cost of education.
So, if you look at slide four?
Yep.
Slide four has the, the budget that Kingston currently has, that needs a $1.8 million cut to it in order to meet the 5.3%, which is the $1,500,000 increase.
And you're saying that none of that $1 million is included with the additional proposed?
Yeah.
Yep, based on what's proposed today, of the 1.8, 1.8 million reductions, we're only seeing, even with those cuts, 1.8 reductions.
1.1.
1.1, I'm sorry.
That's, and that's where I'm confused. I, if I'm looking at that first slide, it appears to me as though we're already cutting about $2 million. So, that's why.
And, and that was part of the process getting us here, I guess I could, if, if you recall, the original budgets, we looked at for Silver Lake and the four towns and said, this 18.9% increase overall was not sustainable. And so, we've made significant cuts everywhere, and that was a cut that was made, an adjustment, those were adjustments that were made prior to the March 14th school committee meeting.
All right. So, while the members are thinking, let me just share something with the public. So, here's how this works. So, we have what's called autonomy over our budget. That is Massachusetts general law, but, but we do and we don't, in a way. So, we are responsible for passing a fiscally responsible kid-centered budget. Then, our Board of Selectmen review that budget, and they review, does that, is that budget fiscally responsible, and can the town afford that? Then, our Finance Committee reviews it, and does, goes through the same process, and they vote to either support it or not support it before town meeting. Then, we go to town meeting, and as Sheila Vaughn pointed out, sometimes there are large numbers at town meeting, and sometimes there's smaller numbers at town meeting. And it's majority rule at this point. So, we, the budget is then presented, and it is said, school committee, it's a four to one, three to two, five to zero vote. Then, Finance Committee supported it or did not support it. Board of Selectmen supported it, not supported. And that plays a big role, whether that budget is passed on the floor of town meeting. If we pass a budget, and then it is not supported by our Finance Committee, as well as our Board of Selectmen, and it is not passed at town meeting, then we're forced to amend it on the floor. And at that point, you're shooting from the hip, and no elected official, no person who cares about schools, or no person who's fiscally responsible wants to be amending anything on the floor. So, this is our chance to get this right, be fiscally responsible, but also have a kid-centered budget to the best of our abilities. Silver Lake cut, Plimpton cut, Halifax cut. I think cuts are necessary, though it will be painful, it's our job to limit the pain. And that's what this discussion will be from this point forward. So, right now, we're at one, based on the recommendations and what our principals just showed us, we're at $1.1 million in reductions, and that includes a reduction of positions. Now, saying what I just said, I walk into a school building every day or two, and I do not want to see classroom teachers cut. So, what can we do, the five of us, in collaboration with our central offices, to consider other avenues of reductions opposed to classroom teachers? What is on the table for discussion?
Could I ask a?
Please, Mike, go ahead.
Different question. Do we have access to other funds that could tie us over for a year, where we don't need to consider tier three cuts? And I know that makes the gap a lot bigger, 'cause that's only $386,000 for tier one and tier two, if those are accepted, but that's still another 1.5 million we would need to make up, correct?
We've done our best to, to estimate circuit breaker. Again, that remains to be seen. We, we could see, realize additional funding there, but again, we base it on FY '24. And I'm not aware of any other grants that we could, similar to the way that we utilized or hope to utilize the emergency shelter funding to help offset the cost of salaries. I'm not aware of any other grants at this time that we could use in that way.
I, I know on Silver Lake, we did the E and D funds. Is that not accessible to us?
We emptied our stabilization last year.
E and D is? E and D is the equivalent to free cash for a town. So, the, the free cash belongs to the town.
Okay.
Mr. Pike, you're here, and you're quicker with math than I am. I'm just, I'm just a Quincy kid living the dream, but you're a mathematician. So, tell me, of that 1.1 million that you, that we just reduced, what percentage of an increase does that give us?
We really do have moving targets here. As an example, the school assessment number, the Silver Lake assessment number that was just presented is $150,000 higher for the town of Kingston than what was sent to us March 20th, only, you know, 10 days ago. But order of magnitude, if you were to cut a million dollar, a million one, and considering this 150 addition that we just found, we would be at somewhere between 6.5 and 7% increase for the education budget. And again, I think we all in the town administration want to work with the schools, with the teachers, with the parents. If you can get this million one, I, for one person in town government, will fight to see that this is the budget we take to town meeting. The, the only little bit of difference that I had with your comment on the budget, I believe, I'm not 100% sure, but I'm 95% sure, that if the Finance Committee, and I'm only one out of seven, if the Finance Committee wanted to vote against whatever the final Kingston local school budget is, they could put in their own school budget into the total budget that's presented to town meeting. And then, it's up to town meeting to approve or disapprove that total budget, or, and it's up to the school committee to amend the budget that the Finance Committee has brought forward for schools. I don't want to do that. We, we wanna go to town meeting with a budget that the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the school committees support, and with a budget that the school administration, the teachers, and the parents can live with, okay? That, that's the end objective, and I'm glad to see that we're trying to work together to get there.
Thank you, Kyle. Jean? Megan?
Someone has a hand up. I don't know if you want to acknowledge them or not, but I just wanted to let you.
Thank you, but not at this time. Jean, do you have something?
I guess I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're clear, that we're looking at $712,500 in staff cuts. That's the tier threes presented between both buildings, KES and KIS.
Say that again, Jean, the number?
712,500. And the overall list of cuts was $1,120,973.94. So...
I guess, if, if I can elaborate, we heard from the public for over an hour last year during our public budget hearing, that we're all saying, similar to 99% of you tonight. And we went to town meeting, to Ms. Emberg's point, with a budget of a 10.35% increase. And I can speak for myself that we didn't expect to be in a similar position this year, that we were going to be looking at substantial increases again. But we also knew in the fall town meeting, when we had to vote to accept the amended regional agreement, that we were still in the process of restructuring. There were a couple of unknowns that came up during that process, which included a change to the assessments of how we calculate the special education costs for Silver Lake, as opposed to Kingston paying 100% of the costs for special education tuition, less any circuit breaker refunds, reimbursements that we've been handling thus far. I would be comfortable bringing a budget to town meeting without any staff cuts and allowing the public to be able to support the staff. I've heard from not one person in town that's asked us to cut staff. There's been a couple of comments regarding, you know, particular people or something that someone will say, "Oh, can you just cut them?" And I, and I don't say that to make any laughs, but those are the only kinds of comments that I've heard in regards to cutting staff. I have not heard one person advocate for lower taxes. Matter of fact, to the point earlier about bring on the $400, I've, I've heard that multiple times over. People would rather pay for an increase in education and an increase in taxes to support education than anything else in this town. It's the number one driver in property values. It's the reason that Kingston has, I think, less than 10 properties on the market right now. And I, for one, would support the tier one and tier two cuts as presented, and I would make a recommendation that we eliminate any staffing cuts from these proposed presentations. Knowing that we're going to have to fight for it on town meeting floor, and that everyone that's here tonight is going to have to show up to vote for the budget.
I'll second Jean's sentiment. I, I don't think we're in a position to, to cut any staff. It's not gonna be good for the kids, for the teachers, or for anybody, so I think the 720,000 is a drop in the bucket when you look at the, the overall budget that we have.
Just a comment?
Go ahead, Tricia.
So, I, somebody was up talking and talking about the increases, Kim, I think, said, 10% increase last year, what was it, 10.35% increase last year, 11 to 15% increase this year. So, it's kinda like, as a town, where are we gonna be at next year, and how do we get our arms around this? So, there, it looks like a lot of drivers on budgeted expenses. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I'm just saying that, you know, in our households, if we're gonna spend all this excess, it's gonna have to come out of somewhere. So, I'm not in favor of cutting teachers either. I'm just worried that going forward, how are we going to, how do we adjust so that we're not coming back again next year and saying we need another 10%? 15%, 20%, whatever this is.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, Megan, I'm gonna turn it over to you in one second. And we can anticipate that state funding will be reduced moving forward. We've already seen a reduction in Chapter 70 reimbursements, and Speaker of the House has mentioned on numerous occasions publicly that the revenue stream is down and that local aid will see an impact. So, we can anticipate moving forward that our friends in Beacon Hill will not be sending the same money back to the communities in which supply them with those funds. So, that is just something to be mindful this evening and moving forward. Megan?
I mean, I'd just like to start by saying, I think everyone in this room is in agreement, none of this is ideal. But that said, whether we make a vote to have the staff cuts now, or we choose to not do that and ask the town for, you know, an increase in taxes, if we make those cuts now, and obviously, we do need to be cognizant about future increases, but that might cause even greater increases in the coming years. If you, we look at the higher enrollment numbers, you know, and every year, they go up and they go up, so if we decide to go fewer or less now, and then we come back to a point where now we are looking at class sizes of 30 or close to that, and we might end up in an even worse position sooner, rather than it may be obvious, if that makes sense?
Okay. Before we go into a vote on any specifics, we have line items that have been increased year over year. So, in, I think there's money to be saved in our line items. For example, our, our legal fees, there's a significant jump there, I think we can save some money. I think there's other areas, such as the substitute line. I think there's other areas such as substitute line. Traditionally, substitute line expenses are done over a three-year period. What happened over the last three years, hopefully COVID's in our rearview mirror. I anticipate that teachers being forced to call in sick is going to decrease. I believe there's some other money in this budget that we can save. No one wants to see anyone, their human cost to reductions this significant. I believe that cuts are necessary. If the law only provides a 2.5% increase and we're going to see a reduction in state aid, it's just only logical that cuts are necessary. We just want to limit it so that it has little impact on our students. Is there budget line items that we can start to look at?
You started by mentioning the substitute lines. Kingston Elementary School is currently $62,534.25 overspent in the substitute line for this year?
$65,000.
$62,000.
$62,000.
So the substitute line in FY '24 is $49,643,000? The financial, so that report was as of May? I'm sorry, I'm a month ahead of my life. I'll be lucky to make it to May. So that budget report was produced on March 20th. The financial report that I put in the school committee folder was, is as of today.
This one?
No. So...
Do you remember how many hours I spent looking at this thing? It's not your fault, sorry, go ahead.
So the year-to-date numbers on that have, will change every week. And so the most up-to-date numbers are that Kingston Elementary is $62,534 over their budgeted substitute line. And the Kingston Intermediate School is $7,999 over their budget for FY '24 in the substitute line. And I only mention that because I, in my financial report, I was going to say that yes, they're over budget and we've compensated for that in the FY '25 budget so that we don't run into this problem again.
Okay, all right, thank you. So here we are. Any other information relative to the budget you want to share? About that suitcase of money you brought? No, not at this time.
I have found no bags of gold.
All right. So let's just recap before anyone makes a motion. So Silver Lake cut, Plimpton cut, Halifax cut. We were asked, in order to avoid significant financial challenges to the town, to reduce 1.8 million. Our building principals and central office collaborated extensively to reduce the budget by 1.1. When I say reduce, it's still an increase from a year ago, but it's not what had originally been projected. So with the 1.1 reductions, there would be a loss of positions in both schools. So the question becomes, no one wants to lose positions. If we vote to keep the positions and go tier one, tier two, Jean, you said it to me earlier, what is then the reduction? Was it 700,000?
It would only be about 500,000, it'd be one.
Okay, I got you.
Wait, I'll tell you.
500, 700?
Okay. So then we're at 388. If this committee approves that budget, it then goes to FinCom and Board of Selectmen, and we run the risk of not having that approved. And then the concern about adjusting on the fly or having FinCom presenting a budget that we may or may not approve of. So those are the things we need to think about when we make our motions and ultimately vote. I know you guys know that, I just felt compelled to say it. So I'll turn it over to my committee.
I don't think that it's 388. I think that it's a greater number than that. I'm just trying to figure out where I just put the number.
It's 386 or so, or 388. Talking about tier one, tier two, right?
Right. Oh, that's what those cost.
Tier one and tier two totals about 388, yeah.
Tricia just did the math, it's 388. The cuts.
I mean, personally, I think that if we could avoid cuts of about 15 or so staff members for a half percent of our budget, I think we take tier three off the table and go in with just tier one and two.
Second?
Does.
I'll make a motion.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second on the floor?
No, it wasn't a motion, but voicing an opinion, but I'm happy to make that into a motion.
Scratch that. So...
I'll make a motion that we remove tier three cuts from the proposed cuts and that we remove tier one and tier two reductions of $388,000.
Just a comment. Can I make a comment for a second? Is the tier three, just, I'm just throwing out there ideas. All or nothing, meaning go all in with tier three or?
No, it's not all or nothing, so...
I'm just thinking that the building principals provided this guidance to us as far as what they're, what they see as kid-centered, fiscally responsible, fiscally conservative. And I don't want to see, again, I don't want to see teacher positions cut. I do want to be responsible and meeting people in the middle sometimes is beneficial. So I just want to throw that out there before we, you know, go all the way.
So anytime you're trying to solve a complicated situation, you want as much input from multiple stakeholders as possible. We're fortunate to have the teachers here. They came in, in support of each other. And I know from their past experience, they're eager to collaborate to ensure that the needs are met. There are a couple options on the table. If, if we're able to, as Jean said, excuse me, as Tricia said, you know, compromise here, compromise here, we might be able to get to that number where we're going to get support from FinCom and Board of Selectmen and thus get support of the town. And there's also an option on the table. If we're able to, to come to a happy medium this evening, there's an option on the table, and I'm not, I'm not speaking for FinCom. However, Plimpton did, they passed their budget avoiding Proposition 2.5 and then received an injection of free cash or a proposed injection of free cash after their budget was passed. My plan was after this budget is passed, was to then go and sell the budget to our FinCom later this week. I'm not a salesman, but I can plead the case on behalf of the committee. But I do think in order to do that and to get a partnership, we need to cut more than the 388,000. And for those concerned about budgets moving forward, specifically in the area of special education, later on this evening, we're going to talk and brainstorm on ways to problem-solve the spending in that area.
There's a motion on the table, I don't know if anyone wanted to second it.
So repeat it, if you, repeat your motion?
My motion is that we make reductions of $388,000. Not to include any tier three cuts.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and we will open it up for a vote.
Can we have discussion on it for a second? Just on something that you...
Go ahead, Michael.
Would, would your proposal to ask for free cash be contingent on us approving all three tiers of the proposed cuts?
Not necessarily, as, not necessarily.
Partial three?
Partial. So as Tricia alluded, is it all or nothing? If we vote to tier three cuts, is it all of those positions? No. I said earlier, I don't want to see a single classroom teacher removed.
Mr. Chair, to your point, I don't want to see a single staff member reduced. I think that we are able to make way with the town's budget. Not to speak for Silver Lake, but it's my understanding that we're going to be looking at possibly reducing more costs next week, which may not even include staff cuts. Or some of the staff cuts for Silver Lake can currently be absorbed by retirements. So I think there's still a little bit of room here in the district that when Kingston's file number comes in, it's not going to be as bleak as we all are, I think, feeling right now. I just, I don't want to see staff cut if there's a chance that we're still only going to come in around 8% of an increase, which while I know it's extremely high and it may be a kick in the teeth to those firefighters and the police department, but again, the number one driving force and the home values is education, and I just don't want to see the reductions made. And I also don't want to go beyond something that's going to make it more difficult to bring these positions back next year. As one of the callers had mentioned, I sound like we're on a talk show here. Callers had mentioned, she literally moved across the country for our schools. I know of a lot of people that are buying in Kingston for the schools. And we don't want to, in any way, threaten that our schools are not where the community expects them and our children deserve them to be. So I think that we are meeting the town where they're requesting. I think there's going to be some, again, not to speak for Silver Lake, but there's going to be a little bit of movement there. And just to remind everybody, our budget as of tonight was a negative 9% increase for Kingston. We do have autonomy over our budget. This is probably going to still bring us to like a negative 10% increase. So to the point, last year we had a 10% increase. This year we've got a negative 10% increase. Just to clarify, a lot of that is the movement of those positions. But we are still looking at substantial reductions to our budget for this year, even though some of it is, you know, there's structural changes. So I think that we have understanding of where the money came to our budget from. And the two driving factors in this budget are special education tuitions and out-of-district transportation costs. Those we don't have control over no matter what. And if we, to Megan's point, if we risk any of our teachers or any of our positions, we're just going to be driving children into a greater need and we're not going to be meeting the needs of all of our students. So I think that there's a way to avoid this and I don't think it needs as much. I think that this can still be sold to our elected officials without reductions in staff. And to the point in regards to the fire department and the police department, we're also not asking them to reduce force. We'd be asking our schools to reduce their staff. And that's, that's not equivalent to not adding anybody. So I think that we are presenting as fiscally responsible budget as we can get right now.
All right. So, because there is a motion, but I want you to reiterate it so when I vote, I know what I'm voting? All right, so...
I make a motion that we reduce the Kingston FY '25 budget by $388,000 to include all of tier one and tier two cuts presented by our administrators.
Second?
All right, we have a motion on the floor to reduce the budget by X amount. Is there any discussion?
Did you need to clarify?
Yeah, no, in your initial motion, I don't know if you called this?
Not to include tier three?
Yeah, I thought part of it was also to cut tier one and tier two, but not make any cuts to tier three.
I think that's what I...
Yep.
Yeah, I think so, just tier one and tier two.
Yeah, tier one and two, tier two.
Okay.
So I, just add a question, Jeanie. The Silver Lake budget that you're talking about, when are you guys meeting on that?
The ninth.
The ninth.
And Jean, that 388, does that include, as Mr. Pike pointed out, that newfound 150,000?
I don't think that that was even, that, no, that wasn't discussed as part of the...
Okay. All right. Dr. Prue?
I, I'm going to pose a question.
Go ahead.
Building utilization, is there anything that we could use to offset any of our, any of our building maintenance lines?
I, so the building utilization account is held by the town. I would have to have a conversation with the town to find out what is in that account. So it would be possible to offset. I just, I don't have access to those accounts, so I couldn't look it up on my own right now.
So where does this get us at percentage-wise? You said, Mike, you said 7.5%?
I think Carl said 6.5% to 7%, but...
No, but if we only go...
You're, you're close to 10. At 388, you'll be close to 10.
10% increase.
Somewhere between 9.5% and 10%.
The 720 that is part of tier three that we haven't included is another 2.5% to 3%?
I think, when I came back here with more time, I think it would have been more like 7.5%.
Okay, all right.
With the tier three?
With the full cuts. So you're going from 7.5% to probably 9.5%.
But still within the levy. And I'm not being disrespectful when I say that, but we're not going to require a levy, like a prop 2.5. We're within the levy, even at a 10% increase.
Correct.
Thank you. And just for the record, I don't want to push the levy, but I think that it's prudent for us to retain our staff.
Could I ask a clarifying question?
Go ahead, Sarah.
Only because you're going to have to vote a number. Right now, you're considering a $388,000 decrease, which is the tier one and tier two, which is $388,157.3. Do you want to go, which number are you going to use? Because it will matter what I give you.
Sure, sure, sure.
The 388, 157, oh, three. You should use the actual tier one and two.
The actual tier, tier one and two. Thank you.
Let's not forget to vote the number tonight.
And we'll vote the number.
I'd be more comfortable if we can ask the administration to find some more money in your line items, saving the positions. Yes, we don't trigger Proposition 2.5, but if we find a little bit more funds in our line items, it gives us more cushion before that levy.
One of the things that we should say is some of our numbers are estimates. And so we base those on past trends. My only fear with reducing some of those estimates is that we will under-budget and find ourselves in a very difficult position again. So, for example, Sarah was very clear that she increased utilities, I believe it was by 5%. Our special education increase was based upon the recommendation of the state. Those, those costs are difficult and to anticipate because we don't control the weather and our expenses are based upon student needs. So those are just two examples of, we could go back and make them leaner, but we can't promise you that it won't
Yep.
turn out in a way that we can't, you know, complete the end of the year without coming back for cuts or freeze. We can do the freeze, it's when we have to actually look at staff reductions mid-year. We can do the freeze. It's when we have to actually look at staff reductions mid-year that things are really very difficult to do.
Jean and Mike, what do you think? Um, we're fortunate to have two, um, Silver Lake members on our Kingston committee. Jean and Mike, what do you think, uh, the next meeting, the Silver Lake meeting will produce in actual revenues back to Kingston? What's your guess?
I, I can't make a guess on that because I haven't seen any of the numbers, but what I do know as a fact is that the last reductions to the Silver Lake budget that were made public were done in early February, and it was noted at the end of the meeting that there are likely going to be more reductions made. Again, I don't know what those are yet, and I can't speak to a dollar amount, but I would imagine that any amount is going, that could sustain staff for Kingston is going to be worthwhile. I, I just can't see that we're going to go back into next week's meeting and not make any additional reductions. So, again, I'm not looking at any, I haven't seen any, um, budget update, um, nor have I seen any more proposed cuts, but I am comfortable saying that I don't think that the number that was given to the town for Silver Lake is going to be the final number.
Can I just ask a question?
Yep, Megan.
Whatever number we vote tonight, if after this it becomes apparent that there is other money available, whether you speak with the town and there's something, can we bring a lower number to town meeting than what we vote tonight if found money appears?
It can be reopened.
So, we, we still have the possibility of continuing to look for savings beyond what we vote tonight?
Yeah, for example, last year, we reconsidered, um, our budget, and we, we rediscussed, um, and we reduced post our fir- our first budget meeting that we approved. We re, we, um, reopened the discussion, and we adjusted that.
I, I guess my concern is if we reduce the budget right now by any of these staff, it's going to be really difficult to add them back into the budget, um, at any point in the discussion. But to Megan's point, we can always amend our budget prior to town meeting. I just would like to vote a number tonight that, um, the town can use to plan for town meeting.
All right.
Oh, can I just ask one other question?
Please, go ahead.
Something else. Just curious. So, what triggers in the middle of the year, let's say there has to be a teacher cut in the middle of the year because of, what, what would trigger that? Us having a discussion and saying we're over-budget by X amount of money?
We didn't think you could absorb the, um, extent, the areas where we had overspent.
Okay.
Through other line items. Um, we would need to make a decision. With the budget freeze, sometimes we can make up some of those differences, depending upon what that, those unanticipated costs are. It may or may not be likely, and that would sometimes trigger a school committee to consider something like that.
Does that ever hap- like, has that happened that?
Not, I, not that I have, um, had to participate in, but I, I know that it has happened to.
Just a reminder, we did vote a budget freeze at this point last year, um, because we're operating in such a deficit, um, but we've not had to do that yet. So, we're not even operating in a budget freeze, but we're looking at this, this amount in cuts, so.
Uh, just another question. Jean, we know how close we are to like overspending this year.
My office is in the process of projecting out to the end of FY twenty-four. Um, I will have, have all of that information by the end of the week, and, and Dr. Prue and I will reach out to the school committee chair if there's any action that needs to be taken.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, back to business. Um, Jean's made a motion. Uh, Michael has seconded it. Um, we want to, we need to formalize it with the actual number. Who's going to take the lead on that?
Do we have the number? Okay. Well, that's the three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven, oh, three, but do we need to vote?
Yeah, we want to vote.
Actual budget number?
The actual budget.
I think we need to vote this, th- this motion first.
Okay, I got you. I follow what you're saying. All right. So, there's a motion on the floor to approve the proposed tier one and tier two reductions as presented by the building principals. Second on the floor, we're going to do a roll call vote. Mrs. Cannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Chican?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arietta?
Um, no.
And Timothy Lewis is a no. The motion passes three to two. Okay. Now, we're not done, everyone. We've got to go back to our budget. Uh, now we need to formalize the number. Um.
Four, fourteen million, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents.
I will make a motion.
Wait, did you get it? Because that was fast. All right.
Please.
All right, Jean, you're up.
I will make a motion that we accept the Kingston School Committee budget for the fiscal year twenty-five as fourteen million, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for the full, um, cost of Kingston education, uh, as noted by Mrs. Coleman. Uh, we have a second on the floor. We're going to do a roll call vote. Mrs. Cannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Chican?
Yes.
Mrs. Arietta?
No.
And reluctantly, Mr. Lewis is a no, but the motion passes three to two.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, that was the fun stuff. You guys sticking around for the rest, or do you want to take a breather? All right, so, you guys need to recess? We'll keep going. All right.
Yes. We will be. In fact, my presentation is over. I'm done.
Ken?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you to everyone for coming. All right, we're going to move right along with our, uh, we're going to move right along with our agenda. The, the next item on the agenda is the K through six curriculum coordinator contract discussion and possible vote. Excuse me, yep.
Oh, the minute, yeah.
All right. We're going to go to number three on the agenda, approval of regular minutes, uh, for March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. If anybody has any comments, concerns relative to that, please.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
All right, I think Megan, V, Trisha. All right. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero. Thank you. All right. The next item is number five. Um, that is the K through six curriculum coordinator for the district, contract discussion and possible vote.
So, in your packet, you will see the, um, the contract that was, uh, supported by Union Thirty-One, um, and discussed in executive session and voted in open session for the cr- K through six curriculum coordinator. Um, the difficulty in the unusual, uh, aspect of this particular position is that it used to be a Silver Lake shared cost position. But as you know, uh, there's no such thing as Silver Lake Elementary. And so, uh, this position needs to be moved into one of our, um, town budgets, local budget, and would be cost shared with the other two, um, elementary towns, as per the agreement that is in your packet tonight in terms of how that would be, uh, cost shared with the other two towns. So, we're asking for your approval of this position. We're asking that this position become officially a Kingston position uh, with charges being made to Halifax and Kings- and, um, Plimpton appropriately, based upon the, um, shared cost agreement.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, please.
A point of clarification, this, um, position has been budgeted for Kingston for FY twenty-five.
Yes, thank you. And, um, we will receive revenue from Plimpton and Halifax to support the salary of this position. Okay? Any questions, comments, or we can go right into a motion?
I will make a motion that we accept the K through six curriculum coordinator contract, um, for Kingston's budget.
Second.
All right. Um, roll call vote. Um, Mrs. Cannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Chican?
Yes.
Mrs. Arietta?
Yes.
Timothy Lewis is a yes. All right, thank you. Um, shared cost agreement and possible vote. Um, Mike and Jean, anything on that?
These are the costs of the contracts that are shared throughout the district. I believe the new number has been included with the FY twenty-five, um, budgets. They included our human resource director. I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the packet right now.
There's a, there's a list in the.
List of who was included. Right.
Yes, there are, A through X are all of the positions, um, employees of the Silver Lake School District. And then, um, in, under appendix A for Kingston Public Schools, there are two, uh, positions that are, um, considered Kingston Public Schools, but we pay, if those services are utilized by other school districts, they pay a percentage, elementary curriculum coordinator and English language learner educators as part of the new regional agreement.
Thank you.
So, I will make a motion that we accept the shared cost agreements as presented in our packets.
Second.
All right. Um, roll call vote. Uh, a yes vote is in agreement or approval of this shared cost agreement. Uh, Mrs. Cannon?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Chican?
Yes.
Mrs. Arietta?
Yes.
And Timothy Lewis is a yes. All right. Things are moving faster now. I wonder why. All right, the nutrition grant. So, Governor Mara Healy sent us a nice letter. Did the check get in the envelope?
I didn't, I didn't see the check, but I did get a copy of the letter, so that is in there. It's, it's official, and Megan had let us know that she anticipated receiving this grant, but we wanted to let you know that we had officially received that notification.
All right, great. So, um, in the school nutrition equipment assistance grant, we received, uh, twelve thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars from the Commonwealth, and it's, that we received it already, that's wonderful. So, the, the vote is to approve and accept those funds. Is there a motion on the floor?
I make a motion to accept and approve the twelve thousand, two hundred and fifteen grant from the state for, um, the nutritional program.
Second.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Megan?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Trisha?
Yes.
And Tim is a yes. Okay.
Does, does that money go into our just revolving fund or operating budget?
Megan anticipates spending it on equipment and things of that nature.
Okay.
To replace outdated equipment, and we, she had presented a, a memo in the previous.
Oh, yes, yes, to replace that. Okay. Thank you.
All right, teachers' corner. Do we happen to have any teachers from either KIS?
Hello, I'm, uh, Dave Plana. I teach grade six at KIS and happen to be here for KTA, let you know what's going on. It is MCAS season. So, grade five started last week. Grade six took their first ELA MCAS today. They'll do another one tomorrow. Then we got grade five, and everyone, the kids are doing a really good job being respectful of all the different creative ways we have to move kids around the building. Uh, we have the book fair this week at KIS and KES over at KES, but everyone's going. And we have the green team. Mr. Carn was here earlier. They're promoting recycling around the school. They went down to grade six to help, um, increase awareness of the recycling initiatives, and we're working on some interesting stuff to do with the eclipse coming up with science and across the curriculum. I think that covers everything I got.
Thank you.
Happy to be here.
World's greatest reading teacher.
Thank you for that compliment. I'm Stacia Levitt. I'm the reading specialist at KES. KES is always a busy place. Lots going on. Q and U are getting married in the kindergarten classrooms right now, um, so they're letting Q and U go together. You know, it's a big deal, especially when you talk about marriage or bathrooms in the elementary schools. Um, we have the book fair going on. Um, the kids are all excited. Lots of great books. I was down there helping pick out some books for some of the kindergarten classrooms the other day. Um, the green team came down to KES. The sixth graders came down, did a presentation to the second graders, and the green team has started, um, thanks to Mrs. McCartney in the se- in the second grade team to go around and do recycling in our building again. So, lots going on in, um, the elementary schools. It was spring and the solar eclipse and all that stuff. It's just a busy place right now, so. And they're getting excited for field trips to being talked about, so, um, busy place in both buildings, so thanks for having us.
And in two weeks, you'll get a well-deserved break, so.
Oh, we just finished testing kindergartners. All of our data testing is done, which is big for me.
Yes, it is. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Um, PTO report, do we have, um, anyone? No. All right. I, I know I've spoken about this before on Saturday. It's the big hockey game between the dads of Silver Lake versus the dads of Whitman Hansen. Um, there will not be a large donation to the Kingston PTO. It'll be a modest one, but some, there will be funds donated to Kingston PTO that'll come by way of that hockey game. Um, there's a dad from Whitman Hansen who played in the NHL, so I don't like our chances.
Stretch out.
Yeah, that'll do it. All right. I'll tell him when the guidance council will go well. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Prue. You've kind of, um, you've already done a lot, and I know that Carrie and Andy have, so I anticipate we'll move through this one quickly.
Yes, um, I believe our principals have some flyer distributions and possible votes, and our business director has a financial report, and Assistant Superintendent Lynch has an SOA opportunity act that he needs your vote on tonight. Those are the.
The must-dos for this evening, so if we could start with, um, the flyer distribution and possible vote. A- actually, what I, what I can say to you is the first flyer is, um, has already passed, and the second flyer is Silver Lake Summer Hoops. This is not a nonprofit, although they call themselves Silver Lake, um, and they take students from the towns. This is a camp, um, and this is, uh, for cost. So, uh, we, we bring it to you because, um, that's generally not something that we have sent, um, home without school committee approval.
Help me out, especially my basketball friends. Have we approved this before?
We did. Yep, and this is, um, this is actually run by a former Silver Lake teacher.
Okay, thank you.
And so, um, also in your package, you'll see the calendars from both of the principals. We, we won't go through those tonight because it's a late night, but they're there for your review. The financial report, the, the, it's the same flyers for KIS, so that vote.
Yep.
Would be the same for either.
I will make a motion that we accept the Silver Lake hoops as well as the Girl Scout flyers, um, for both KIS and KES backpacks.
Second that.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, five to zero. Sarah gave us a lot more. Are you still going?
Some of this I've said already.
Yep.
Some of this I've said already, so that's the part where I'm going to talk quickly. Um, there's a deficit in the indemnification line due to a change in provider. There's a deficit in the KES substitute and the KIS substitute lines, and the budget for FY twenty-five takes that into consideration. There are deficits in various lines, the KES tech hardware, KES principal supplies, which are absorbed within the category. There are deficits totaling six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars in the maintenance of equipment line. That's something we're going to be keeping our eye on. We have a deficit in special education transportation contracted services and tuitions. We'll be allocating all the remaining FY twenty-four circuit breaker funds to offset this. The special education department applied for extraordinary relief back in March. Kingston did not qualify for either the extraordinary relief or the reserve relief, and my office is working with me this week to, um, to calculate the projections for the end of the fiscal year for FY twenty-four. And as I said, Superintendent Prue and I will reach out to you, uh, Tim, with any information as soon as we have it.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for Sarah before we move on to Mr. Lynch?
I just had a quick, on the extraordinary, did we get that last year?
I just have a quick question on the extraordinary. Did we get that last year, do you remember? What qualifies district?
I would have to refer to Dr. Paneris on that.
Okay.
The green light means it's on, right? Okay. So what happens is that they take a look at the cost value of a district or unusual costs throughout this particular year. This particular year wasn't unusual from last year. As a matter of fact, it was probably less because we had a couple of students age out, one of which was a residential student for three hundred thousand dollars, and then another student for a day placement. So that said, your costs actually didn't qualify for the twenty-five percent above what you would normally pay or budgeted for for that fiscal year.
So that's, the threshold is twenty-five percent.
Right, so in one way, it's good, right?
Yeah.
Because we have less costs, you know, or we have significantly less hurtful costs, you know, but it doesn't make the twenty-five percent, and that's what you get. Be fantastic.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lynch?
Thank you. Just have a quick update for a DESI-required Student Opportunity Act plan. So the Student Opportunity Act is required by each district to submit every three years, and it's our district's effort to close, well, identify and close achievement gaps. So we have identified gaps based on MCAS for our students with disabilities, low-income students and English learners. So two important strategies, or as the department calls them, evidence-based programs that we will use are an effective student support system, which our MTSS team is working on, and also collaborative teaching models, which we run professional development with each summer. So inside of your packet, you saw this plan. I'm sorry it was mislabeled. It was referred to as SOI. It's actually, it says Kingston SOI, and I know Mike Lawless was here earlier, but this is actually the Student Opportunity Act plan, so it's not a statement of interest. It's our Student Opportunity Act. We submitted it to DESI this month, and it is required that the school committee would approve it, so I bring it before you to ask that you would consider it to be approved, so we can have our plan on file with the state, who will evaluate it and give us feedback, and then I have to resubmit it if they have any feedback.
Any questions for Mr. Lynch? Absence of any questions, does anyone have a motion for the Student Opportunity Act?
I will make a motion that we accept the Student Opportunity Act as presented by Mr. Lynch.
Second. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Doc, you've already gone. I know you love the microphone. Anything else?
Thank you all.
Okay. As we move to standing reports, I will take the opportunity and thank our central office staff, thank the building administrators and the teachers. The, I wasn't here during the dog days of COVID, and I know how challenging those days were to navigate from a school committee perspective, from a building administrator, from a classroom perspective across the board, and what I was hearing from people that this year rivaled the challenges, trying to do your best to balance the budget, to face a restructuring. And, and you guys, not only are you dealing with the five of us, you're dealing with five people like us in other communities, and, and that can be a challenge. So I want to publicly thank you for the work you do on behalf of the students and families in the town of Kingston. So thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I second your acknowledgement. I also want to say there's been a lot of people asking, one of the things that had come up, I believe, earlier, people were asking if we could cut anywhere in administration, and Silver Lake recently did an audit that was two years late, perhaps due to COVID, the struggles of COVID, and the audit actually found that we are at least four employees short in our central office. So not only are these administrators doing the work for our district, for Kingston specifically, they're also doing the work for Plimpton, Halifax, and Silver Lake, to Tim's point there, but they're, they're basically working around the clock, and we're already understaffed as it is. So I don't take these budgets lightly. One of the reasons I want to retain the staff, which we successfully did so tonight, is because you can't get them back. Once those positions are cut, it's, it's going to be years, if not decades, before we can get back the proper staff to no longer be considered by an audit as understaffed by four positions. So to our central office administrators, I mean, you're all doing the work of four full-time jobs, and you're doing it without any complaints, and we all appreciate you more than you know. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Administrative review?
No.
No, not at this time. My bylaw. Plymouth Area Collaborative?
We meet on Thursday.
All right. Union 31, there's a lot going on in the union. Do we have anything that pertains to this meeting, Jean?
No, because the shared cost was voted. Thank you.
Negotiations, nothing new at this time. Budget advisory, we had our fair share of it. Facility oversight, anybody?
Mike was here.
Yep. Policy and tech, good. New business?
Just a question. I don't know if this is new business, but you had mentioned during the meeting that we would have like a discussion on budgetary going forward.
Yeah, so in other matters unforeseen at the time of posting, I did want to discuss this committee considering a subcommittee to work with our special education director in helping us better understand what the needs are of the district, what the costs are of the district, so that we are as informed as we can be. So kind of taking it a little out of order, but that was in response to what I had said earlier. So I, at this point, I make a motion for this committee to add a subcommittee to, we'll call it the Special Education Subcommittee.
I second that.
Motion, and this is a second on the floor, we'll do a roll call vote.
For a discussion point, I guess I'm just wondering, I know you just mentioned what the purpose was, but I thought that that's what our monthly meetings, like in terms of Dr. Paneris is available at our monthly meetings to answer special education questions. I think that when it particularly pertains to special education portion of our budget, which as we know is very large, it's something that the full committee should be aware of as soon as possible. And I think my concern in creating additional subcommittee is that some of that information may not flow as quickly back to all members of the community. So I think that that's a topic that needs to remain as part of a regular meeting as possible. So I don't know if I'm missing what you're explaining here.
Yeah, so there would be no request for it to not be a part of our regular scheduled meetings. This is just a subcommittee to work more closely with the special education director to understand what the costs and what the needs are of the Kingston Public Schools, specifically in the area of Sped.
I guess, can I ask a point of clarification? Is this something that Dr. Paneris brought to your attention, or vice versa, or where did this need come from?
I made the motion.
So is Dr. Paneris aware of this motion? Before this meeting?
She is now.
Okay. Thank you.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor. Megan?
Before we vote, I guess I'd just like to kind of hear from the other members besides you, like, what do you guys think in terms of necessity of this subcommittee? I'm kind of on the fence, so I'd just like to see what Mike and Tricia think before we vote.
Well, that's what the vote would, would indicate.
Well, I mean, like, it's more of a discussion, though, like.
I think, I think it would be nice, maybe if there was an interim meeting. If, if there was a need for an interim meeting, then we don't have to all convene to receive information at once. I could see that as positive. Otherwise, I do agree with Jeanie that, you know, we should all be aware of the information at the same time, but it's not always easy to get all five of us or, or, I think, to, to meet.
I guess my concern is asking our administrators, to my point that I just made, to do, to pull out for another meeting or another subcommittee that could then be brought back to the committee as well. In the Special Education Subcommittee, we discussed, I guess I just, in seven years on the school committee, I do not see the necessity for having a subcommittee to discuss budgetary items or special education items that should be prioritized in our regular meeting.
So they, they still will be discussed in a regular meeting?
Right, then it would be redundant, and it would be, in my opinion, not time, like, not a valuable use of our administrators' time.
I guess my question is, comparatively to state negotiations, where representatives go make recommend, come back and make recommendations to the committee, is that the purpose that you're seeking of having special education, to have conversations that would involve coming back to the full committee with recommendations, or is this for informational purposes only?
It could be twofold.
Point of order, because it's not an agenda item, I would request that, as the chair, that you put it on the agenda for a possible vote instead of making a, an addendum to this meeting's. I don't, I don't believe this is an emergency purpose vote, I guess.
So you can, you, there's a, there was a motion on the floor and a, a second. I'm going to proceed with the, with the vote.
I don't believe you have the authority to add an item for a possible vote if it's not an emergency, is my, I guess, my point of order. Thank you.
Could, could I see clarification from the superintendent on that?
I'm not, I'm not a legal expert, but it's, again, it, I have one school committee member who does not see it as an emergency. I, I guess it would depend on whether or not you, you saw this as an emergency.
No, I mean, I don't see it as an emergency.
Okay.
We're not, no one's calling 911.
Okay.
That's for sure. So if that's the, if that's the metric for considering something unforeseen at the time of post, and then I will draw my motion and I will add it to the, to our next agenda. All right. So. New business, approval of bill schedule.
The next vendor invoices are due to the town on April 8th, and will go out as a single signature warrant later in the week. You'll receive that digitally from Karen Tringali.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other matters we just discussed, is there anything else? Any emergencies anyone would like to talk about? We are gonna, we, we will be going into executive session, so we will entertain a motion, and please, whoever makes that motion, read the direct wording.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contract negotiations with Kingston Teachers Association, and executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, S21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, approval of executive session minutes from March 5th, 2024, and not to return to open session.
Second.
All right. Roll call vote on this. Megan?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
And Timothy's a yes. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I know you're excited for April vacation, and as you should be. Our next school committee meeting is May 14th. Thank you.